I will try to.
Yeah.
So, so, I was, I was still sitting so high. Yeah, so I'm calling the planning board to Florida. Uh, but the, um, meeting is being, is being recorded. So I do have to begin the meeting by taking roll call of planning board members. So, planning board members, when I call your name, please indicate that you're present. Pat Morton.
Present.
Jonathan Korn.
Jonathan Korn, present.
Bill Reaton.
Bill Reaton, president.
Amy Walworth.
Amy Walworth, president.
Beth Hurt.
Beth Hurt, president.
Rick Mitchell.
Present.
Matt Hamel.
President.
And Marnie Pouch, president. So as I said, welcome, I wanted to give everyone just a brief synopsis of where we are with drafting an overlay district for the Florida Connoisseur Electoral Seminary Campus. We have draft by law on the table. The planning board has not renewed any of its provisions, nor have they endorsed any of its provisions. What the planning board has done is they have endorsed the concept that's at form in the draft by law. But of course, it's not viable, so it's viable. And so we're here to get public input as to, uh, your thoughts about this process. So here's the concept. We are eliminating the underlying as of right R1V zoning district. If you eliminate the underlying as of right zoning district, literally, you must provide at least one as of right use on the site. So what the planning board has determined is that we will provide as of right development for the existing dormitory units subject to site plan review. Then we have adopted a two-tiered process for remaining development on the site. The two of our members, Jonathan Korn and Amy Walworth, have developed illustrative plans. And if a developer were to substantially comply with those illustrative plans, they would be entitled to an expedited abbreviated special permit process. If a developer comes in and has completely different ideas, I'm tailored to the illustrative plan. The draft won't contain provisions with respect to their concept plan for their development. So in other words, there are two alternatives here. One, using the illustrative plan, which should entitle an applicant to an abbreviated process. And the other, that would be more of a traditional special permitting process. So that's the broad outline. And I just wanted to mention one thing, and this is about uses. I know that there's a lot of concern about what uses might take place on this property. The planning board, apart from the overlay district, has considered what would be appropriate uses for this site. Any use that is not listed in the overlay district is prohibited. So only the uses that the planning board, with public input, inserts into this overlay district will be allowed. And so there should be no fear that there's going to be a laundry mat or a convenience store or some really antithetical use, uh, on that site. Uh, I think one, uh, writer was fearful that there would be a storage up there. And so that's not going to happen. Uh, we have, you know, all the time heard a lot about commercial development, and of course, life science is a big issue, and this is something that would be permitted on this property. But again, uh, once we have the opportunity to dive in, uh, to the particulars of the overlay district, we will be back in touch with you with much more detail about its provisions. And once the planning board has actually gone through a process of looking at it more carefully than it has already done, um, and that process will be open to the public. We will have our discussions at our regular meeting. We will have that draft overlay district on our webpage. And I want to urge all of you to go to that webpage because I think a lot of people have a lot of concern that there's a lot of information on that webpage that can be very useful to you. Uh, there are frequently asked questions, and then there's additional frequently asked questions. And those additional FAQs really address some of the zoning concepts that one hears bandied about, but it will give you more detail about what is involved in them. Um, so with that said, I'm going to turn this meeting over to Amy and Jonathan, and they're going to do a brief presentation. But the focus of this meeting is not us, it's you. And so we want to hear your comments, and if you have questions, we will be delighted to answer them.
Good evening, and thanks very much for coming this evening. We have about a dozen slides. We can go through these fairly quickly because as Marty said, the subject tonight is to hear from you and to answer questions, uh, that I'm sure that you have. And so some of the information you're going to see, you've seen before if you attended the last meeting, uh, some is new. Uh, we're trying to respond to what we are hearing as we proceed. So we've come up with another concept that, uh, was mentioned at the last meeting, which you will see here for the first time. Briefly, this is the Brownsville zoning map with the districts that are indicated here as a mosaic that indicates where, essentially where the shelter will occur and how each of the planned districts, as we're calling them, will be utilized. This, all zoning regulations really need a map to, uh, indicate where the areas are regulated. So this, this is one, it's a sketch that we created, and it accompanies the illustrative plans that we're about to, we're about to use. This is, uh, a chart also that you saw briefly last time. It's the complete compare and contrast. You look on the left, what you want to look at here is at the very top on the left inside, you see our R1V zone, SD as of right, that's the existing underlying zone, uh, there now. And that would, and then we have the next group of columns. You see consultants at the top. This is information prepared by David Gammel and Barry Abramson, who were hired by the team to assist in coming up with what is the market probability for, uh, particular types of development here at town. And then on the right, you see the planning board, where it says low intensity, medium and high. This is where the planning board kind of put together its, uh, thoughts and came up with three illustrative plans there that continue to be modeled. Really, uh, the bottom line here, down here in the bottom, is net annual fiscal benefits. So what's happening is we're working from the top down. The first area, South Development District, basically existing dormitories. The next is the central district on the site, that's the pilgrim malls, the Colling and Stables. Uh, it's where the tree building is, and, uh, it's that frisbee, frisbee field right against center of the, uh, site. And it also includes the north residential, the dormitories E and F. So we've done, uh, the dormitories, uh, other occupancy, which is new construction here. The total dwelling units are all compiled there. The sub growth square footage for each of these three areas, one, two, and three. Brownsville is the very top of the hill, and that could be developed differently. And, um, the reason it's color-coded, uh, is that Barry Abramson, uh, sort of rated them in terms of what is the probability of being developed in this economic vantage. The green area is a high probability, that's the strongest probability, fifty-five housing. Uh, the next would be multifamily. Then, then the next would be senior service living. And then at the very end, which is probably, he calls it user-driven, uh, by science buildings, for example. So that would be, uh, so in terms of the likelihood of being developed, it's green, dark blue, white blue, and then this brownish color there. So that's the reason for the color coding. So what, uh, what the consultants did was, on the as of right, the as of right is single family housing, one acre or forty thousand square feet something. And it's been determined they can get fifty to fifty-four, single family houses, one acre lots on the site. In fact, I'm going to show you a map toward the end of the presentation. And then we have each of the scenarios, and I won't go over them all now because we've been over the past, but we can come back if there's a question about it. But the dormitories, they're going to be renovated, refurbished, uh, for some type of residential use, and that's to be determined. But you can see down the bottom the net annual fiscal benefit. For the as of right, and this is, this is a, a number that's been questioned by a number of residents. This is a minus fifty thousand dollars, and that's based on, uh, if you were to fill out the entire site with only single family housing, which is the as of right, uh, because of the, I'll say, the school penalty, the cost per student in the school system, the bottom line to Barry Abramson is minus fifty thousand per year. So it's, uh, probably at best, it might be a break even scenario. We've had, that's, the number's been challenged, but we can get into detail how we came up with that question on that. The other numbers really are based, uh, this is one point three three thousand, a million dollars for that scenario, the A1 O1A scenario. And then we have comparable numbers over here on our, uh, chart. We're going to start with, uh, what the, uh, build out of what the consultants came up with. This is Brownsville, it's the very top of the hill, and it is basically Curral Hall is existing here. Uh, the libraries here, academic center, and the chapel here. What, what the architect did on a scheme was figure out, uh, where would be the best places to put additions on the building, assuming they would stay. So they would stay, be reused, repurposed perhaps, and then added to. And this is the configuration they came up with. So starting with the existing fifty thousand square feet at Curral Hall, you could add ninety-three thousand square feet between this addition and this addition. And just for reference, th- these are where the lots are along Bridge Street right here. So this is the top of the hill right there along Bridge Street. So, and north is right here is, is to the right, to the right. So the, uh, the yellow part is the addition that's being added to the building. The blue part is the existing building. They also, uh, thought it'd be interesting, for scale purposes only, uh, to drop the biolabs on top of this. This is just to show some sense of scale, what could be, uh, theoretically be done, I bet it should be done here. Biolabs building, this is the original mansion on the site. And I think this was the original portion of the building. But, uh, anyway, that's the, that's the current biolabs. So that you can, as you can see, it does really fit in the site. This is the property line along the back of the houses that are on Miles River Road. This is the property line right here along the top of Bridge Street. So you can see it fits within that, uh, if it's wanted. Another place that the consultants thought, the, uh, the biolab type or life science buildings could be positioned is down in the bottom of the hill, in the center, the center of the project. And just for references, this is a retreat house. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's a pilgrim mall down here, wastewater treatment plant down here. Those are all existing, it's a dormitory E and F down in the center. So what they're proposing are, uh, in this case, two hundred thousand square feet of multiple levels. Parking garage on the lawn right in front of the retreat house. The gray area is parking and surface parking. Uh, as you can see, these lines are not too long, as you can see. It's a sloping site. You'll have to dig into the site and create retaining walls on the high side to retain the, retain the earth. So it's a, it's, it is one of their proposals, and probably one of their most, uh, the highest returns in the community. They scaled it back to two hundred thousand square feet, and the parking garage now is located here, just along the parking area and from the dormitory E, wastewater treatment down here. And again, retreat is still puts up the area in front of the, the lawn area in front of the retreat house, which, uh, the planning board had considered, uh, really very scenic part of the site. But this is done, but it comes in these vast two hundred thousand square feet here. Another option that, uh, the consultants thought about was senior serviced housing. Now, this could be, they, they found this model, and I can't tell you where it is, but it was a, uh, it's an actual project that exists, and they got it online, I guess, and footprint, and dropped it in there. So this, this is a hundred sixty thousand square feet, two hundred units. It's a good sized building. And again, you can see it sprawled across the lawn, starts to intrude in front of the re- the retreat house on there. Uh, so it's quite extensive. Again, the gray area here is all park, that's surface park. So it's actually that whole area that is asphalt. Another option they thought about residential, these are duplex houses. Each, each of the yellow buildings there is two units, two dwelling units, roughly twenty four hundred square feet each. And they spaced them apart so this would not be one acres, it would be like four acres, lots in this case. And they came up with thirty buildings, sixty dwellings on eleven acres in the center here. Again, dormitories E and F, wastewater treatment, and the retreat house. But here you can see the intrusion of all those buildings in front of the historic. And then in this case, building hall is gone, uh, removed from the, uh, from the site. Again, it's the old back version duplex housing, fifteen buildings, thirty dwellings on six acres, so roughly half the, half the size. That is reflected to the, uh... Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, uh, the chair is, uh, reminding me to point out that this is an error on the, on the slide. This is development scenarios, uh, central campus as of right, single family lots, well, actually, uh, single family lots of forty thousand square feet, that's nowhere near that. These are duplex, and they're nowhere near forty thousand square feet. Lots, they're one quarter acre max, or even probably smaller. So if you're reading that, that's an error. This is okay, fifteen duplexes, thirteen. It's a good comparison. We thought this might be interesting to see what, uh, sure is. What you might see here for conventional subdivision, uh, this was just pulled off our line. And you can see the, uh, again, this really represents more of the con conventional, you know, the subdivided piece of, piece of property. And then you have on this side, this is what's referred to as conservation subdivision, where open space is actually the organizing principle, and it's the part of the design that takes on a lot of value. And a lot of the, the buildings would be clustered, whereas this is sort of uniform and distributed across there. Each building, uh, a hundred, a hundred and twenty feet apart or something like that here. It's monotonous, repetitious, no civic public space, but it's all private property. Uh, so that's one scenario, the conventional subdivision. And that to me is kind of reminiscent of some of the stuff we just saw. Whereas this one, this one is actually the Walters project, just a few doors down. Here it'll be that, where one A is down here on the slot. But here, open space is the organizing principle. You have private open space here, which is internal, and you have public open space around the perimeter. Uh, if you walk through there, uh, you, you can tell the difference, uh, the way, uh, people communicate with each other. Here, you're going, you're going to engage in communication because it's really very dense in the center. Outside is private, so, uh, people are not apt to engage in any kind of conversations straight. But again, this is a, this is a project that is very indicative, a very good application of public and private outdoor spaces, small cluster development, big green space. The planning board took a look at the top of the hill, and of course, the assumption here was that the existing buildings would remain. That was sort of part of our major assumptions. And we had a similar thought, uh, as the architect did, um, that addition, if you were to do Curral Hall in renovations, these are the most likely places to, to put a addition. Again, this is the downhill side, lots on Bridge Street over here right. And this is the backyards on the, uh, positive property. Academic Center. And as probably most of you know, there are four buried water tanks right there in the center. You cannot build on them, you can't put trees on them there. That becomes really a, a green space on the top of the hill. And you can see in dash lines, the four tanks that are underground, they're owned by the tanks, and it's really kind of like, uh, it becomes really what has, uh, green space. These yellow lines are actually, uh, sightlines. But what we determined was that standing here on a slight mounted area on the top of the tanks, you actually have a bigger vista out toward the, uh, toward the west here, toward the east in this direction, uh, limited by the buildings themselves. You can see the, from sightline there, the library within this, this angle, but it's pretty decent angle. We, we started this drawing, you know, as one that, uh, might be something to, to consider. Uh, we were looking for an option, a lot of the discussion that came up internally and from other people, was what about residential up there? Is that, is that, uh, what about doing illustrative plan for residential development? And again, we, we came up, Jonathan and myself, uh, we were a bit tentatively, but we sort of can be periodically, but came up with this kind of cluster, again, as modeled on the, uh, Walters, on the Curral Way. So you would actually come up to hill, drive up to hills, go around about there. You can go to this cluster, or you could go to this one, or down to these, you down here, go down hillside. Interesting thing, we, we, the building here, which is, uh, an existing building, it represents the historic entrance to the Curral Hall. It's always been, to me, kind of a fascinating building to, to look at, beautiful proportions to it. Nice, uh, tall windows here on the sides, the east side with, uh, uh, inside, there's kind of a need to, um, assembly area on the inside. We thought we could work with that, maybe as a, or whoever were to build this. That could be kind of a community center. It's, it's nice enough really to keep, it's historic, and it would be really kind of a neat thing to do. So that's actually worked into the overall scheme. This actually is a picture of, uh, the building, the north historic entry, uh, compliments of David Gammel. This is the building, uh, original entrance. As I say, really nice proportions when you see it, um, past the trees. And I just highlighted this schematic here. This is actually the building that perhaps could be preserved and the rest taken down. But Curral Hall, if we were to keep that part, it would be kind of an interesting feature and there on the top. This is an interior shot that shows the assembly area on the interior. I believe it originally was a chapel area, I could be correct on that, but, uh, really anyways, we thought that why not say, why not say that and make it into a useful center if you were to take this, this theme. Uh, I'm going to have to pick up my face here, but, uh, these may be familiar. We came up with three scenarios, and this is in the middle of the campus. This is where the dormitory E and F is located, pilgrim mall right here, and retreat house right here. All three drawings are taken from the same vantage point. And each one represents a different, different residential configuration. This one, low intensity, we've worked out the numbers on that, how many do I get, it's how many square feet, so forth. Medium intensity, row houses, row houses right here. Uh, these were all multiplex houses. And interestingly, we, we tried to model these on sort of large estate houses, so it's, no house that we would compose would be any larger than a state house would be in the neighborhood. So that was sort of the goal, right, to, to avoid doing any large structures here, which might be out of, uh, uh, context. The alternative down here in the high density is to put in a countering good housing facility or a senior serviced project. And again, this one was modeled after, uh, the resident, you know, Riverland. So that, again, is just a footprint of that. It's there for scale. The final building would be quite different, but just for scale purposes, that's where it would be located, and that would be the size in comparison to everything else. What you do notice is that there's some scale compatibility between the existing dormitory here and the resident hall. So that, that leakage, that communication becomes very important. These buildings are actually talking to each other. And it's, it's the same thing that's going on down here, when you get this row of row houses and this row, and then you have a green space in between. By putting them opposite each other, those buildings are communicating, so it'll be obviously, but, uh, as opposed to just being side by side, you put them opposite each other, you start to talk and really get a better sense of space in between, so it's quite interesting composition. We started off with these, uh, three scenarios. And then, uh, this is one of the latest iterations on the illustrative plan, that is taking the residential part, uh, the upper part of the campus, on Brownsville area, and then taking the cluster development down to bottom. The row houses to, uh, pilgrim mall, and then of course, the renovation of the dormitories here, two dormitories here, and two dormitories here. So this is, uh, what we refer to as illustrative plan A. Jonathan, have I missed something here? Let me know. We also wanted to look at plan B, this, which is the, uh, senior service building right here. Uh, so this would be an alternative. You can see that because of the size of this, it eliminates some of the housing there. So this could be, again, a large-ish building, but because of the configuration, well, if you recall, the resident hall, it's broken up into large pieces, and each one of them is shaped to be sort of barn-like in appearance. So they live, although it's a lot of square footage, that represents twenty-five thousand square feet on two levels. So his fifty thousand square feet is not a small building. But it doesn't feel that large when you actually see it. So before we go on to the next, we'd like you to just talk about, um, uh, the difference between what we did, what the consultants did, in terms of the, can everybody hear me? I don't know.
No.
At all.
Can you hear me all?
I think what's important at this juncture is to understand the difference between what we did with the illustrative plan, um, versus what the consultants did. The consultants basically did a market study, and we took it to the next level. And what we were able to achieve was very, very similar, um, uh, amount of fiscal benefit, but keep it more organized and preserve a lot more open space. That's the key difference. We, we preserved a lot of open space, we preserved all of ours, we preserved the heritage landscape, but achieved similar fiscal benefits. So it was the next step that the consultants worked, I just wanted to mention. Yeah, that's important. We started with a site assessment. We looked at the entire site, we walked it, uh, we were given to it by the, uh, the scenario, and assessed what, what is it on the site that makes it different, makes it special? What are the things we want to preserve? What parts of it do we think could be improved or enhanced? And what parts maybe should be shredded off for something better? So we, we kind of took that approach, which is standard in design work anyway, but we, we took that approach in looking at it, and the board prepared its list of preferences. Given everything, all the assets that we have on the site, what are the ones that we felt really needed to take into consideration in coming up with a plan? But this was something that the consultants were not asked to do. Uh, they did not do it, and I'm not trying to fault them, but it was the, it, it represents the difference between what you would see if you were to analyze this particular plan from what the consultants did. They were, uh, short-sighted in a number of ways to, um, particular aspects of assets on the site. So as Jonathan mentioned, uh, these are all developed around open space. It's critical in this type of development to use open space to your advantage. Keep the open space in front of the retreat hall, because this is, this is a fantastic view from that, if you're coming in on, that's a beautiful building, that's on the, on the rolling hillside. Uh, and, and everything else, if you really examine this, I don't have time to do that, but we, you see the civic spaces, the open spaces, this is a retention area, back, a, roundabout, that's water retention for stormwater control. This is an enlarged open field that's part of the, uh, set, the wastewater treatment plant, but it'd be an open meadow, that would be viewed across from, uh... We're Berry. We're Berry, I mean, We're Berry Street, looking at the face of these buildings tonight. Uh, again, briefly, allowable uses, these were, we created this matrix so that, uh, we identified each of the districts here at the top that are within the zoning area, uh, Brownsville, the north residential, and so forth. We started with major lane use types, recreation, uh, assembly. We went down a list of what could, could you conceive there as being, uh... We went down a list of what could you, could you conceive there as being, uh, something that would actually enhance the site in a way, what, what could be a possibility, I know that the cemetery is interested in, in as many options as possible for themselves. So we wanted to kind of expand this. And then we also, uh, assigned P as by right, SP1, special permit one, SP2, special permit two, as the ranking of each of the districts and each of the land use types. So to trace from, say, one or two family dwelling you go across, these are all SP1 we cross. And in each, in each of these districts, the reason, reason that's not a P is that they're probably not all acres, um, that's otherwise they would be permitted by law. So this is a list of questions, and if anybody has any questions, we'll bring back to that. Uh, we had to show this one, uh, this was an option, I guess, that was presented, uh, I think it was the cemetery, it was this Toll Brothers, this common Toll Brothers. And it was, uh, again, a typical subdivision study on the site. Bridge Street, Essex Street over here, and this is Miles River over here, and Woodbury down, down in this area. And this gets, uh, a minimum of one acre lots, the number of 54. So this says that, oh, this is all wetlands down here, which is controlled areas, protected, uh, no housing here. You can build here and here, there's wetlands up in the site, but there is sufficient envelope to, um, a single-family housing, which is, anyway, the, the total number is 54 units, I believe, on this, on this plan, with two access points, one off Bridge, and one off And they were limited to by the 800-foot cul-de-sac. But anyway, this, this is the sort of the hazard right, this is if you were to do a yield plan, this is what the yield plan would be typically, four lagers on it. This comes up with 54 units. Last slide, this is, uh, the compare and contrast, and the reason I wanted to bring this up was, we, we pulled out the underlying zone here, which is R1B, one acre zone. All of this becomes, all the buildings can take it down, it's more naked. Total gross square footage, 225,000 square feet, that puts these each filling up about 4,000 square feet. And the net fiscal balance, again, is plus minus, minus 50,000. The 2A on the consultants, we wanted to pick, uh, a category that was roughly equivalent to what we had in terms of our build-out. And so we had this 2A scenario versus our 8A. And you can see the square footage is roughly the same, 700, uh, 679,000, uh, 670,000. In other words, it was actually equivalent. The big difference you don't see, because the chart is, give you the metrics, give you the numbers. So we look at, come back to our guiding principles. Embrace open space, provide buffers, preserve historic legacy, employ smart growth, honor neighborhood character, provide public trails and blocks, and balance fiscal, social, and environmental benefits. And we looked at, okay, how does each one of these categories, underlying zone compare? Converse public open space on entire sites of private property, may or may not be installed anywhere, buffers, unguaranteed historic legacy, existing architectural legacy, architectural legacy buildings and landscapes are inconvenient to subdivision development. Employ smart growth promotes efficient land use, again, single-family housing promotes inefficient land usage, and offers no significant community or environmental benefits, and so forth. Minimal control over suddenly regulations. Public trails, non-guarantee, fiscal, social, net zero investment to the town, maximum disruption to the natural landscape and environment, with little signal benefits. Just as a note, what you see on Bridge Street right now is R1B, single-family housing on lots. So that, what you see on Bridge Street is what you have in this category. None of that, none of that really went through any kind of, uh, they avoided the stormwater control, but we can talk about that later. So we, we looked at, then the consultants here, their scenario. Well, what's wrong with their scenario? They got the same amount of money. It doesn't really matter what is here, if you go back and look at any of these drawings which we just showed you. Open space is an afterthought, it's not integrable to the development's purpose, in other words, it was not considered when you started to design the project. Silent buffers, silent, non-critical external buffers, and minimal, unimportant internal buffers. Again, one of the, one of the things we've heard from the public a lot is buffering around that site, around the perimeter externally, we would also suggest doing it internally to separate uses there. Smart growth, pursue square footage for revenue and a vacuum indifference, sustainability, and really wasn't their assignment, it was their assignment was not to do a smart growth study, it was how much can you build on the site, and how much is it going to bring to town, that was their charge. Neighborhood character, insufficient information, not their assignment. There was no attempt to try to figure out any of that. And then you can look at ours, again, we're going to hand, give you a handout on this, you can study this in more detail. Meeting intensity, we organized around meetings, the open space, where buffers will address perimeter entrances and separate internal uses. Protects and celebrates historic traces and, uh, in remembrance of Hamilton's past and continuance into the future. And go back, build residences, preserve open space, and create multiple community complements to the neighborhood. Reserves the neighborhood primary characteristics of open space, that areas will find by open space. Walkways separate, uh, from streets are more pleasant and safer to use, new and existing walkways are planned. And minimizes disruptions to the land and environment, provides variety of housing types and choices, and reinforces community development. These were all the characteristics as part of our principles when we started laying this out, that we wanted to incorporate in the design. So although, although the numbers may look identical, you look below that surface and you start to see the differences that are taking place. At this point, uh, I'm going to have Jonathan to, uh, take over the meeting, and, uh, we wanted to keep questions, uh, from the public. I'm going to move the, uh, microphone over there and ask anybody who'd like to speak to use the microphone and, uh, and start the question to answer session.
I know there was a lot of information, compressed into a very tight amount of time. There was more information in previous meeting, which is, well, that's available online. Hopefully folks saw both presentations so that it's a clearer picture. And, but now we welcome comments and questions regarding what we presented, this meeting and last meeting, although this would be for your last meeting, and you do have a handout or something you want to say.
So they're handed on out.
Yeah, those wouldn't have been right to have, uh, handout now. So what I'd like to do is ask folks to come up and just, um, uh, state your name and your address, and whatever comments or questions you have, and, uh, try to just give it to a couple minutes. And if we have extra time, folks can have, uh, repeat question, repeat comment on the second, second child out.
John Deskey, one way of my good reception. There have been several comments and questions sent in during the past several weeks. Would you care if I sounded a little bit way off the rails?
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah.
You can't hear back here, not at all.
Can you hear now?
Yes.
My name is John, Deskey, one way of my good reception. I know over the past several weeks, several residents have been letting in with comments. I wondered if I thought it'd be a good idea for you to address them using a global map before we go over further. Did you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, sure. Because then you just talk about us in the back. So I believe, um, the chair has actually put together comprehensive, um, response to some of those questions. Martin, do you want to, do you want to go through those? So I can, my, I mean, a little bit of a response, um, to, I think that's the last.
Yeah, I know. Jonathan, we can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. You guys, you guys, you guys, I'm not back here. I'll just speed up, speed up there. Is that better? So, um, I believe.
Yeah, well, here's what I can do. I can give you two alternatives. One, we can post these responses on our webpage, and, and that, or I can read through them. That will take some time. Uh, the other alternative, uh, and Mr. Deskey, if you wanted to ask questions that, that the ones you posed, I'm happy to answer. So in, in a way, I mean, by a show of hands, would you like me to run through, um, the different, uh, issues that have been raised, and I can, uh, essentially read my responses, I think that would be the quickest way? Or would you prefer just asking the questions and we will respond to it, uh, in real time?
Is both, is both an option?
Yes.
Both is an option, but it, I can be a little too dry from the amount of time for questions, but I can go through it, there's no problem at all. So, uh, but I will read it for experience. So I noted, and I went through the questionnaire, I also went through the letters that were received. So I noted that there were legal issues with respect to overlay district versus the under line zoning.
Please speak into the mic, into the mic.
The types of zoning, including hazard right and special permitting. Uh, and there was a comment that Gordon Conwell is the father of the owner, and should be able to do what it wants with its partner. So an overlay district is a type of district that lies on top of an existing zoning district. The use of an overlay district can provide an opportunity to meet unique needs or facilitate whole development potential. The Gordon Conwell site is subject to R1B zoning, as you know, which is a pass-up right under the, under the town zoning bylaw, although it can be subject to site plan review. An overlay district for the site can eliminate the R1B zoning if there is at least one hazard right use set in place. That's in an overlay district that eliminates the R1B zoning, Gordon Conwell could sell the property to a developer who could, could create a subdivision, as we saw in the slides, on the entire site, and eliminate consistent cornered buffers and other existing attributes of the site, such as mature trees, historic buildings, and public access. Gordon Conwell could also sell the site, the entire site to a chapter-fully developer or a non-vodder entity, circumstances that would not maximize the property's value and would be detrimental to the town. All other development of the site would require a change of zoning, which is the purpose of the reuse initiative. In sum, Gordon Conwell cannot simply sell its property to a commercial developer or reuse the existing buildings on the site without an overlay district. Special permits are authorized under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. They are used only for uses which are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of a bylaw and are subject to general or specific provisions that are set forth in that bylaw. The discretion of the planning board to issue special permits may be narrow or broad depending on the language employed in the bylaw. The planning board's contact with the overlay district. I already gave you that, uh, uh, synopsis at, at the beginning of our presentation, so let's get that, you can read it again on the webpage. A development agreement, a development agreement is a complex legal document that should effect a vision for the site. It is now being negotiated by the cemetery and the select board. It maps out the process through which the town and the cemetery will realize that vision. It should contain ingredients such as allowable uses, necessary infrastructure investment, and guarantees to ensure that the development moves to, uh, forward to completion. The overlay district and the development agreement should act in tandem with the overlay district depending on the execution of the development agreement. Infrastructure issues, and many of you have raised, uh, wastewater treatment capacity, traffic, uh, volume, and water usage. Because none of these are set forth in the development agreement that's presently being negotiated, uh, the planning board would require each applicant to establish, uh, that the wastewater treatment capacity is sufficient for the development that they're proposing. And similarly, uh, we would be in a traffic study and, um, an, an, an assessment of water usage, and water usage obviously is much greater for single-family homes than it would be for 55-plus housing. But if there were to be commercial development on the site, uh, a living biolabs-type facility, that water usage is really up in the air, it could be quite extensive, and as we all know, Hamilton has some significant water issues. So the other issues were development environmental impact issues, stormwater management and erosion control, avoidance of another bridge street, and white pollution and mess pollution. The overlay district will contain provisions that prohibit development on steep slopes that are prone to erosion. Through the special permitting process, the planning board will require a demonstration that the negative impacts would not occur. Indeed, in response to the development of the nine lots on Bridge Street, the planning board that was in the process of amending, uh, the town general stormwater management bylaw and associated laws and regulations. With respect to streets, and in particular Kerr Cut on Woodbury Street, that has been raised as an issue, the planning board must consider public safety with respect to getting development on the site. The Kerr Cut shown on one of the illustrative plans could be limited to emergency vehicles if such exits were reported. Housing issues. Affordable housing, market rate housing, diversity of housing in terms of ownership, condominium, rental units, types of housing, townhouses, multifamily, and then single-family housing. Regardless of whether the impact of school nights total on town's finances is negative as shown by the consultants and their report, or positive as evidenced by others. Single-family housing is the most destructive of the natural landscape and inconsistent with the recommendations contained in Hamilton's Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan. The town is proposing that the dormitories be used as rental housing where a portion of the units set aside is affordable. This is subject that goes, uh, a subject that the select board and the cemetery are negotiating, but by way of example, if the dormitories were turned into rental housing and a portion, 25%, for example, were set aside as affordable, and that affordability could be at 80% of AMI or some other percent of AMI, all the rental units would count toward, um, the town's subsidized housing, uh, index. And so, in case you don't know, every town in Massachusetts, uh, it should have a goal of making 10% of its housing stock affordable. So if all those rental units were counted on the SHI, regardless of whether someone who, who had less than the AMI annual income, all those units would go to our SHI and may even satisfy our 10% requirement. Fiscal issues. Commercial development is comparable to other types of development and will expand the town's tax base. Single-family development is comparable to other types of development, and fiscal concerns should not dictate development on the site. Do you see how hard our job is? One hand, we get one deal, and the other another. So we are trying to balance all these. The planning board's overlay district concept recognizes, testing the consultants, that the market for residential development is strong, and the market for senior service care is good. The illustrative plans reflect that reality. Commercial development, which is denominated as user-driven and less likely given existing market conditions, is not excluded. Other than development involving senior service care, however, the illustrative plans do not reflect commercial development. Point only such development, if proposed, would not be subject to the abbreviated special permitting process. To repeat, uh, if a commercial development were to, were to propose a project on the site, the overlay district would not prohibit it. And indeed, uh, if there were commercial development in existing buildings, uh, the, the abbreviated special permitting process would. So we're not trying to make the reuse of Kerr Hall and those other buildings on, on top of Brown Hill, or a developer to want to, uh, work with them, uh, they would be subject to the abbreviated, um... Were a developer to want to, uh, work with them, uh, they would be subject to the abbreviated, uh, special permitting process. Protect rural character, this was important. The planning board, through its practices, which include, include a winner of profit and provision to address issues such as lighting and landscaping, is mindful that the rural character of Hamilton must be preserved. I think we can all agree on that. Uh, the planning board recognizes that its focus must be long-term with respect to its burden of the site, and it must balance environmental, social, and fiscal needs. That balance requires consideration of the town's role to be carbon neutral, and the overlay district will contain provisions to advance that goal. And our next steps are to continue working on the overlay district with as much input from the public and the seminary as we can get. And, uh, you know, as I said at the beginning, once our draft of bylaw has garnered support by members of the planning board, each and every group, not each and every division, substantially, in, in a, a final forum, it is now. That will be, um, posted on, on the planning board's webpage, and we'll have further meetings in the next room to answer all any questions about that. So, at this point, I'll spread it to you, actually. I want to, I want you to.
Marty, was the comments of, uh, we received of Hamilton High School, is that incorporated in the summary you just read?
No, that wasn't in the, yeah, still is some, uh, you know, there's a lot of discrepancy about, uh, the cost of educating students in Hamilton. And I know, um, one member of the public seminary studied, and I contacted Gary Aderson, although he had not relied on that study, he relied on another study, and he spoke with the school superintendent. So, I think with respect to the cost of educating students in the school system, uh, he indicated that you'd have to do a very thorough demographic study, and even then, it's a very, very hard number, uh, to nail down. And so, the, the bottom line is not so much what it costs to educate students in, in the school system, it's that single-family housing on that site is more detrimental to the landscape and has less benefit than other types of development.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? So, for those of you who are having a hard time hearing, there's seats up front, so I would just take a minute and just invite people to come up if you're having a harder time hearing, because we want you to hear because we want to make use of this meeting. So, anybody else who feels like they have to struggle, because unfortunately, we ask the library, people come in and help us, and this is as good as it's getting for tonight. I don't know how to get it better. So, that was my solution.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So, again, that was all of the, the, or attempt to put all the questions that you called from, uh, the letters and comments that came in into a cohesive response. Um, but I'm sure there's other, other questions you have, and that those answers might not address your specific concerns. So, at this point, any additional questions, uh, that need to be clarified in Marty's presentation? We haven't covered them all yet.
Hi, Charlie. Can Charles ask, if one night, if I look at the street? I respect the lot of work that you and Eric have, I know, put in, uh, doing plans, and I understand the logic, and yes, you keep some, some land preserved. Uh, it's quite nice for some. I personally, I think for myself, I don't know about the others, but I do not think this protects the rural character of Hamilton.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nancy Dashkin, 215 Woodbury Street. Uh, 215 Woodbury Street is immediately opposite the sewer treatment plan. I've lived there for over thirty years. I feel like I have pretty good experience being a seminary neighbor. And when I looked at all those scenarios, and I know what Woodbury Street is like, and I counted those dwellings, and I thought about all of those things that are going to be part of an overlay district's planning process. Think about the density, even if it's low density, how many more units of housing you're going to have on that space? How many more people are going to use the resources? Right now, anybody who lives on Woodbury Street knows how inept the current systems are. And to live across the street, to have flashing lights at two o'clock in the morning when somebody's pumping, and not to be able to get information, because it's quoted at a state level, is very disconcerting. So, when we, Woodbury Street residents, listen to this and see an access road coming out of a very narrow, curvy street that is not particularly safe for two-way traffic, I have to wonder whether some of those issues need to be addressed before the overlay district or development plan is actually finalized. So that if there were someone interested in the site, wouldn't it be better to know something, some concrete information before there's a, a process where, oh, no, you can't do that, you have to do this, oh, you need to do this? It seems to me that we're doing something perhaps in the wrong order. I'm not an expert, but over time, and having listened to all this, while I know this, this situation is going to change, I wonder how important it is to address some of those issues as part of this development process, as part of that document, because I think it's critical. Water usage, drainage, sewer treatment, where the sewer treatment plan is located, you know, think about the neighborhood, because we are neighbors. That's all I want to say.
So, thank you, thank you for those comments. And the planning board has actually talked about those things, and the planning board's basic consensus is that would be an excellent idea to proactively do an analysis, do a traffic analysis, do a, do a stormwater management analysis, do a, a, you know, wastewater treatment analysis. Those are excellent, excellent proactive strategies. We would love to promote that. We have limited ability to, to do that, but we do support that impulse. It's a, it's a, it's a great comment. It's a, it's the right way of doing things. So.
Well, thank you.
Any of the board member want to comment, add to those comments? No? Okay, next question.
Dave Dashkin, 215 Woodbury Street. So, so to make the point, um, you know, instead of just showing us, uh, the number of units, show us the number of bedrooms that are being added. You know, that's what counts. And I, I would actually, I would actually like to know what's the number of bedrooms per individual. Here's our apartment buildings. The apartment buildings that are on campus are separate from the dormitories that are in Kerr Hall. I don't know if anybody's mentioned that, too. There's additional beds in, in, uh, in the main part of campus. They're not, so the, 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 the seminary talks about apartments, the six apartment buildings, and they talk about dormitories, which are in the main campus. So, let's make those distinctions and find out the total number of bedrooms in the place. Because as simply as they put numbers against the number of students that would be generated, they can use the same simple stuff against the number of bedrooms. And if you don't have that number in their spreadsheets, you can't assess. And the same thing, you can make an assessment at the same level of which they said, hey, one's positive, one's negative, by assigning how much gallonage is of wastewater is going to be generated from each of the proposed solution. Put that number in your spreadsheet. And in part, you, when they show you what the net, uh, income to the town is, show us what the breakout is in those charts by things like the commercial building versus the other options of those options. Show us all that detail instead of giving us this whitewash. That'd be much more useful. And if you don't have the numbers, then I wonder where you got the numbers in the first place.
Who do you want to answer that? Do you want me to answer it? Okay. So, again, it would be outstanding to have very granular information. The trick at this point is, um, the first step in this process is to sort of rough out, how would you generally use this site, and then to fine-tune, um, those numbers. And in fact, at this point, Amy will just show some plans that we haven't even counted up the dwelling units on. So, in other words, we're, we're trying to listen to what the goals and concerns of the, of the, um, community is, and then balance the, uh, the interest and assignment that the, the planning board has in its, in its mandate, and, and rough something out and keep responding to these, to these concerns. Some of it's qualitative, some of it's quantitative. It's a fairly complex process. And we would love to get pretty granular about that, but the first step is to, is to figure out what type of use, how generally intensive that use is, and then apply granular numbers and all of that. Do you need, I agree, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, if you got more comment.
Yeah, something, yeah, come on. There's a level of which we, uh, the level of which you generated the net value to the town. I'm asking that, I can put a gallonage per, per bedroom on, uh, thing, do it, uh, in scientific systems for the rest of us. So, I'm sure you can do it, it's not that big a deal.
Get a rough one.
Yeah, you can, yes. First of all, it was a consultant that did the analysis in terms of what the revenue to the town is, not the planning board. That's number one. But as Jonathan was saying, we really start with a general and you work to this specific. And having been involved in my lifetime in a number of huge projects doing housing, whether it's subdivisions or whatever, uh, there is a process, and you start, and it's a linear process, you have to work up to an ending. This board is not, is not really charged to design or develop the site. We're really assessing the site and coming up with ideas on how it ought to be developed. There's nothing in these illustrative plans that is going to enable you to get a building firm. It, we're not even close to that, as Jonathan pointed out. You know, it's, it is a, uh, it, it is a long process to go through all of this, and the, the first priority of us, and why we're here right now, is to get feedback from the public. How much building is too much? If you can tell the, how many bedrooms you would accept, that would be information that would be valuable for us. So, whatever, whatever you, we have all, we have all.
Can you find out how many there are now?
Right now, we have all dwelling units listed. They're online.
Yeah, dwelling list, I said bedroom. Comment bedroom count. And it's simple.
Okay, you can average up.
No, I don't want to average, I don't want to average. Just get the bedrooms up.
Well, no, it really enforces. Okay, let me, let me take this.
Yeah.
All of the plans, the alternatives, were based on an analysis done by the consultant of, A, how, what would the rent and value be of every apartment building that would be built, and of single-family housing if that would be built? And then, what would the usage, uh, be of the school system per apartment unit and per single-family unit? Now, those are very rough estimates. They are, I mean, I.
It, it can be.
You don't, you, you don't know for sure. There are different ways of doing it. The point is, we could be explicit about those, that, that they're actually in the consultant's stuff. So, the single-family units, for example, were assumed one point two eight child per each unit, and that the average value of the single-family unit would be, I think, one point two or one point three million dollars. That's a certain tax revenue against a certain cost of schools. Now, even the cost of schools is not known with certainty, because the school board doesn't know whether to use marginal cost or average cost. So, it's, it's, I, I mean, I think we chose to, to put up on the screen what the consultant said, but, you know, we could sit and debate that at, at, at great length. And if it's very, very important to the neighbors and to the town to maintain single-family character, we can dig into that much more in-depth and perhaps come up with other num, numbers. But that was what the consultant did, okay?
Okay, it's okay.
I mean, it, it's, it was very transparent, and we're not done. Okay? That's, that's, that's a number that they came up with, um, and, you know, that number has a set of assumptions to it. That could be different, and then another would be different.
Another, another, just a thing they add, another, uh, sort of component to this that's helpful to remember is that, um, these folks are all volunteers, uh, they're not paid consultants, and there's quite a bit of work to do here in a short amount of time, and we're trying to listen carefully, we're trying to work hard, and we're getting as granular as we're able with the amount of information and time that we have. And our mission is to get as granular as we possibly can. So, but it is, it is volunteers, so.
Well, we're, it looks like we're end up with a fait accompli, you know what I mean? Oh, it's all over.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me. There is no such thing as a fait accompli. The planning board can propose an overlay district. The people who attend town meeting can vote that up or down. If you don't like the end product, you vote against it, and you can solicit all your neighbors and all your friends in town and tell them it's a bad idea. So, we are doing our best to balance a variety of constituencies. You're just one voice, there are people who have a different view than you. We are trying to balance it in a way that works for the town. But you, we're, it's not fait accompli. And we wouldn't be here if we're a fait accompli. We wouldn't want to hear from you. We would just go ahead and do what we want. But it's town meeting, it's the voters and town meeting who determine up or down. And so, you have one, one view of this, of what the capacity is of the site. Dr. Barnes, he wrote a letter to the planning board that's now up on the town's webpage, and he has an entirely different view of what that, what the capacity of that site is, and it, it's, it's much different than yours. So, it's town meeting. I'm telling you, we can do whatever we want, and you can tear it up and say, no, I'm voting against it, and I'm going to get everybody in town to vote against it, and I'm writing letters to the newspaper to vote against it. So, no fait accompli. I really resent that, because we are really trying hard to do a, a really hard job.
Let's move to the next, uh, yeah, next question, I think.
It's a good idea.
So, but, uh, those are all excellent points, and this is really first draft, not fait accompli. So, but let's have some more, let's have some more, uh, questions.
Wait a minute. Before, I mean, most of the town, looking at this, is just looking at that bottom line and saying, you know, hey, one thing generates two million dollars and the other is a, it's a cost. And that's a key number. I mean, you could almost forget about most of the other stuff. If, if, that's what a lot of the town reportedly was going to decide on. So, well, that may be, you know, they, they don't blame the consultant, because, I mean, at some point, then, that's assigned his studies for every single number he's got there. It shouldn't be just, oh, you put numbers down, because that's what you want to hear, or you thought that was what you wanted to hear.
Yeah, nobody's pulling numbers out of the, out of the air. This has all very thoughtfully been done. You spent ninety thousand dollars to get a consultant to do an independent, objective analysis. This isn't coming out of the woodwork. So, your point, you made your point, we've heard you, we're working on this, we will get to those numbers when we have the level of detail to do that.
The purpose of this evening's meeting is actually to hear from you what the, what the numbers want to be, basically.
I mean, there's a basic difference, but in terms of the development options, between options that, let's call it maximize the net fiscal benefit to the town. Lots of people are very concerned about that. Their other option is to really focus in on preservation of green space, minimizing, uh, uh, impact in terms of the butters, okay? And we can understand that people in different parts of the town would feel differently about these two. But to, you know, to quote our chairman here, in the end, the town is going to have to vote on a plan, you know, which one of these two directions, um, is most important. And that's what we're trying to hear from the townspeople in meetings like this. Would you rather go towards, you know, commercial development, which would, you know, ease the tax burden in the town? Or would you rather go for lower-density residential development, which would, you know, not have any beneficial effect in taxes, but might keep the site a little more green, a little more open? Okay?
I'd like to put some action behind those particular words, because in this, between the last meeting and this meeting, what we did is we worked really hard at coming up with a much less dense, lower fiscal, um, value at, on Brown's Hill. And that's what Amy just showed.
The Plan B.
Yes. Not Plan B, but the, on top of the hill, instead of, we got rid of all the existing buildings, got rid of all the commercial, got rid of, other than the keeping of pieces and the meeting hall, and downgraded the fiscal, uh, benefits of that significantly. Uh, so, so we're, we're trying different ideas and showing you different ideas. So, just since we met with you last time, we tried something on the hill, which is much less dense, with far fewer, uh, dollar benefits to the town, as another menu choice. So, so again, this is the opposite of fait accompli, it's more like a menu of choices for us to discuss. So, next, next question.
We have one right here.
Um, oh, here, I'm so sorry.
I'm going to sit, because I'm uncomfortable sitting in, and you guys are getting to sit while you talk. So, uh, Jake Fumara, I live at 139 Essex Street. I've sent a bunch of questions in, and Patrick Rep has been great answering a lot of my questions. questions, but a few things that I did want to bring up. I totally respect and understand that you don't really have the resources to do what you're being asked to do, nor the time, right? I do think that maybe an ask, and I'm thinking out loud, should go to the planning board to say, for example, a traffic site. When someone puts up a 300 and, yes, I'm a real estate developer. I work in the city. I do a lot of life science development. I do a lot of apartment development. Typically, how I've seen these things work, someone would come in and make the seminary an offer and it would be contingent on permitting. It would take years to go through a permitting process, spend millions of dollars doing studies and things like that, and then come out with something that the town has a chance to. So in my eyes, it's going a little bit a different way and that the town's trying to help the seminary, which I'll get to my point on that after. But with the traffic studies and things like that, if you put up a 300,000 square foot lab or office-type building, that's four, three or four cars per thousand. That's 900 or 1,200 cars. That's pretty simple. That's a lot of cars to add to these couple streets. Just that. I'm ignoring the 200 units of existing reused apartments. I agree we should figure out some reuse for some of these buildings. I don't think commercial is appropriate in this neighborhood whatsoever. And I think that talking about it is dangerous. Showing big tax numbers is dangerous. And I think that is the part that I think is getting a lot of people in the neighborhood, including me, somewhat upset. When I see things like SP1, SP2, and there's the different sort of terms used, special permit, like, special permit gives me comfort. It makes me know that I can show up at a meeting and say, I don't like that. I lived right there and you're trying to put that right there. When you talk about putting things in that are allowed by right, I feel uncomfortable. I just heard Marnie talk about potential 25, you know, it was an example, but a 25% cap on the amount of affordable housing units in the existing 200 units. That would be great. The way that the overlay is written right now, and Patrick confirmed this in my question, Andrew DeFrances planned that a lot of people here were there sort of telling him, like, we don't think that your use is the right use to put that many affordable housing units is allowed by right in the current overlay zone district. So I'd like to see that be addressed. And it sounds like there's discussion of that being addressed. It just hasn't been addressed yet. So I'm appreciative of that. And then sort of my last point is, and I brought this up a couple times, all of this work that this board is putting in is seemingly going to benefit the seminary the most, meaning that there is a value for that right now. I didn't understand, one of the questions, Marnie, that you had read back, said the seminary couldn't sell their site. I think they can sell it. It's just unclear what a new buyer would do with it, which all that does is put the value somewhat lower than what it would be.
I will clarify right now that the underlying zone is R1B. So the seminary could not sell to a commercial entity.
Understood. Yes, I agree with that, without buying it and then taking the risk of going through. But what could happen is someone could come in and say, we'll pay you $20 million for your site, but we'll pay you 50 million if you let us put it under agreement for two years and we go work through a special permit with the town. That could easily happen. But, and I've also heard another thing that's a little bit frustrating when we talk about time. Time. The only one who's running out of time is the seminary because they don't have the money and they need to sell or something. Maybe the price gets low enough that the town should look at it and buy it with a developer, partner up with a developer. I know, nasty idea, the town buying more land. But all I'm saying is, I get that this board is tasked with being thrown 100 acres in the middle of a residential neighborhood and being told, figure out something to do with it. It seems crazy to me and the timeline that this is going in is a little bit nerve-wracking for me. But I think that there has been a lot of good work done on it, but things is simple. And look, I agree with you. Just give us the, changing the 200 units over from the seminary's temporary use as dorms to full-time 200 units, I'm sure we can get the amount of water that they're going to use. And someone could say to the town, is that even doable for the town to add 200 units of this much? So...
Let me introduce a question. That's a really good question. So if you take, for example, the apartment buildings on the corner of the bridge in Woodbury Street and repurpose them as market-grade housing, okay, they will start paying taxes. And it's not even clear that those apartments will probably actually have less students in the school system than was true of the graduate student population five and 10 and 15 years ago. So just that switch would actually be quite beneficial to the town. We would have tax-paying apartments. We probably have certainly no more, maybe fewer students in the school. So when you look at just that small microcosm, that's actually, would be a good thing for the town.
I mean, to simplify it even further, someone comes in and pays $5 million for the entire 100 acres, that goes on our tax rolls. I get it's not as much as we want, but no matter what, if a private person comes in and buys this site, it's going back on our tax rolls and there will be tax revenue. Or they could sell it to a nonprofit and get no tax revenue.
They could.
And you know what? I'm supportive of that. No different than I have been trying to kick the seminary out. If the seminary wanted to stay for another 100 years, I would love it and I would walk across the street and still walk my dog and it would be great. But I'm realistic. I know that something is going to happen there. And if it's another school, fantastic. If it happens to be single-family houses, okay, I get it. If it happens to be New England Biolabs, who I'm sure, since we have the overlay that they did, we can figure out how much water New England Biolabs uses and what they did for a sewer system. Because I can tell you, they're awfully complex systems, particularly if you start dumping things into the systems like chemicals and you need to get into disposal systems and things like that.
I think that we should maybe let some other people speak.
Of course.
We have to finish. What time we have to end up? I have to stop there.
Yeah, we've got another.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'll come up. He's had a follow-up question. Can you just identify yourself? Oh, Rudolph Zano, Essex Street.
Could you speak here to the microphone?
Rudolph Zano, Essex Street. Thank you. Thank everyone. Two questions. When the consultant's report came out, I, since I'm a tenant at the Comings Center, I took it to the management of the Comings and I said, hey, it's a great opportunity. You want to take a look at this? They said they were aware of it, but it seemed like they have this biotech park now right off the Primal Ave that they're developing and they have amazing amount of lab space, okay? It's only two miles from here, all right? So I'm thinking, it probably not interested. And more importantly, I don't think anyone's interested in competing against them for one reason. They pay cash for everything. They never have to take out a mortgage. Anyone else who buys this has to pay 70% of the money. So I don't think we're going to see New England Biolabs. If you convince me otherwise, okay, please do. That's question number one. Question number two. Agon Village in Ipswich is being rehabbed, 1970s, affordable housing. Institution for Savings just did the deal. It's $220,000 per unit to rehab that complex. In the consultant's report, he has $100,000, okay? Which number is correct, number one? Number two, have you talked to Institution for Savings or another institution to see what's really realistic in this interest rate environment? Interest rates have doubled in 18 months. Is any of this stuff economically feasible? Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, comment. Before, before we repeat, let's just make sure.
I just want to say, I've lived here for 41 years now, 10 Maple Street, Aida Spencer. And I'm really concerned for affordable housing that people can buy, not simply rent, because with all the houses being built so huge, so expensive, I think our own sons and daughters can't live in our town. Our laborers can't live here. And I've gone to other meetings where, because of very small group, we haven't built affordable housing, not simply rental, but when people can buy condos or houses like Rickard Circle. So I'm glad you're mentioning that and including it and I just want to encourage you to persevere.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Again, I just want to make sure the folks have first prime here.
Sorry, I don't have all your background.
That's fine.
I'm Suzanne Carter and I'm a graduate and longtime community liver in Hamilton in Essex, Ansberry Grove. Just a question that is on my mind is, has there been any development opportunity for a possible retirement community along the lines of affordable housing? Any retirement community possibilities?
So the plans that we just showed, showed a variety of different types of housing, both for 55-plus, for assisted living, and even all the way through memory care using the residents of River End model. So that's the illustrious Plan B component. So we've thought about all of that and those are all menu options. And what we've been trying to do is, and Amel could speak to this regarding the previous comment about creating a little bit more of a mix of housing, we've been trying to do everything we can to not just preserve open space, preserve buffers, but create a variety of housing types in that substance, make sure that there's entry-level housing and opportunities for aging in place. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, we don't have much time.
Okay.
One more question, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions for folks who haven't spoken yet?
Tosh Blake, Sagmore Street. Just to back up something, not belated, but something that General Woodbury Street said, I think, the numbers are important. And if you're showing on a spreadsheet sort of like negative 50,000, you're seeing a negative. And tied into that is how a, show a school children are going to be in these kind of units. He is right that you should, if you're talking about anything small, it's single-family homes. You kind of have a general idea, single-family home will have at least three, four bedrooms, 55, you know, the larger home. What's a typical unit or, you know, have a range because you can't pin the number down exactly, you know, it averages. But have a range of how many are you thinking of putting in these units or existing dorms , but then maybe new stuff being built. Is it three-bedroom or four-bedroom? Maybe you can get the math better, the math on the number of bedrooms, no matter how many, whether it's a couple that moves in or a couple of children. You have to kind of know, because otherwise you can't, you can't really get your head around what's going to be, what the impact is going to be if you don't have those numbers. So it's kind of, I think it was a lapse, whether it's someone lying or a consultant who may or may not, may or may believe through that part of the assignment. It's a lapse not to include that yet or, how do you say, granular? I think that's really crucial more than just a sort of extreme, you know, thing. So, you know, just to back your point, it's smart to get those numbers for the residential concern. And I understand there's, for single-family homes, it's kind of like, this is not where you want to go, but you could have perhaps had a, maybe a site plan that combines single-family plus some of the other elements and maybe with some of the space or other parts, other developments. So it seems like when single-family came out, it's by right and the Toll Brothers, you know, you don't necessarily want to have a Toll Brothers kind of, you know, expansion thing that cuts off all the space, but maybe a combination of space and single-family from whatever developer you want, you know, and you have to coordinate for a couple of that, plus some of the other elements. But it looks like it's all or nothing, very prejudicial against single-family homes, which I think maybe that's, you know, there's other options to include some of that. You know, that's all I'd say about that. Thank you.
Yeah, I did, I gave a very brief answer. I know we have to stop to attend to other business. When we laid out the illustrative plans, we did have a particular size of building in mind. We had 2,400 square feet per unit. Town houses were 3,000 on two levels, 1,500 each level. Of course, we had all of that and we had to assume those numbers. And we wanted the multiplex houses to be smallish houses using a 2,400 square feet each and putting multiple ones in there, again, to get housing choice there and get away from single-family housing as much as possible to make a compact development. The only thing we didn't do was the number of bedrooms in there, but again, that can be averaged out. We know what the dwellings are.
I apologize to everyone. We have to conclude this portion of the meeting now. We have other business. So I thank you all for coming. 15 seconds, is that possible? 100 seconds.
It feels amazing that the town is becoming a developer. I regret it very, very much and I would express all kinds of reservations. The thing I want to say, Mr. Swartberg, you guys have got hours and hours and hours of time, pro bono, to try and work this out and I do appreciate it very, very much.
Obviously, if there was a buyer who would come forward with something specific, that task would get easier. And I've said it before, it's like three-dimensional chess, trying to satisfy so many different constituencies and so many different options. And it may end up with pleasing more. I mean, that's an option. And so we can only engage in what we consider good planning and think about the future. And as I've said over and over again, we have to balance the social, the environmental, and the fiscal benefits to this town. And one can predominate the other. That's kind of the bottom line. So at this juncture, I thank you for coming in and we have to turn to an abbreviated site plan review. And it's my obligation to read this notice that is published. The Hamilton Live, the public site review, Tuesday, June 6th, 2022, 7:00 PM. After Hamilton Live, in Florence, we pass general law chapter 48, section 10 of the Hamilton Zone by law relative to a site plan review application for 12 Cantor Brook Lane, last 20:00, clock 12, a all-knowing zoning district. Owner, John Leahy, in order to construct a 65 by 15.5 year-deck on the existing dwelling unit, application is on file and available for review. Have the inspection services office during regular town hall business hours. The board will also consider a vote on the possibility of the town's building department providing newspaper reviews for future chemical projects. So Mr. John Leahy will hear here apologies for the delay in considering your site plan review. And thank you all for coming. To recap, after the video went off, the planning board voted unanimously to approve John Leahy's abbreviated site plan review for a deck at Cantor Brook. And the board also entertained a motion which was seconded and passed unanimously to permit the town's building department to authorize the construction of decks at Cantor Brook in appropriate circumstances. And now I can adjourn the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Does anyone want to stay later?
We can't, it's closing.
Right, exactly. So when I call your name, please indicate that you have a sense of the motion. Pat Moulton.
Pat, what do I have?
Jonathan Ford.
Jonathan Ford, aye.
Bill Wheaton.
Bill Wheaton, aye.
Amy Dawkins.
Amy Dawkins, aye.
That's her.
That's her, aye.
Lynn Mitchell.
Lynn Mitchell, aye.
And Monica Kraft, aye. Wheaton is adjourned.
Thank you.